Good afternoon, everyone. This is a Public Safety Subcommittee meeting of the Springfield City Council. I am Chairman Orlando Ramos. My colleagues, members of this committee, Councillor Justin Hurst, excuse me, Councillor Justin Hurst and Councillor Whitfield, as well as Councillors Letterman, Alan Curran, and Davila and Councillor Gomez. There is one item on the agenda, which is the discussion of the collective bargaining agreement for the Patrolmen's Union. And we are joined by their president, Joe Gentile. And I guess we'll start with you. And yeah, why don't we start with our overview of, you know, this meeting was at your request. And so let's do a little bit of an overview where we are and whatever you'd like to share with the committee.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for your time. I think this meeting kind of came about as through a discussion that I had with Councillor Williams on sort of the best way for us to approach our negotiations this time with the fact that we've kind of missed a year with COVID and we're just about to get back to it with the city. And it's nice to see Bill is here with us. So the thought was in the past, we've generally gone in negotiated with the city. And then through a flurry of phone calls, I reach out to all the councillors and we try to get whatever our agreement with the city is passed through the city council. What we've noticed in the past couple negotiations is after negotiating with the city, often issues arise that we were not necessarily aware of, or the city was not necessarily aware of, weren't necessarily part of the bargaining, that become major issues and have come close to upending contracts for us. And as we've seen recently, had that effect on a contract for the supervisors. So what I was hoping is maybe by having discussions prior to negotiations, it would put us in a better position to understand if there's any item like that out there in the minds of the councillors that they feel like, you know, should be part of bargaining that we may be unaware of. So that was really the idea behind this. And in some part, it's to put a face to the name because there's been quite a bit of turnover and most of you I know, and most of you I've had those discussions with, but for some of you I haven't. And I just wanted to kind of put myself out there so that people know who I am and who I represent.
Thank you for that. And actually, I think this is a great idea. Thank you for for joining us in this meeting. I wasn't, I know that there was a request for a meeting. I didn't have the details as to as to exactly what we were going to be discussing, but I think this is a great idea because it would hopefully make the process a little bit smoother, right? Because like you said, oftentimes, whenever there's a collective bargaining agreement that is brought before the city council, that's when the issues arise. And unfortunately, the negotiators, the negotiators have already taken place. And if, you know, in the past, when the council has voted a contract down, it essentially starts the process all over again, which could have been avoided if there was a little bit of more of a council input beforehand. So thank you for, thank you for being open to that suggestion and thank you for being here today. I do have actually one suggestion and I think that, you know, this one has been, was, you know, sort of at the forefront last December. Because it was proposed in the Supervisors' Union. There is a provision in, as you know, in both the Supervisors' Contract and the Patrolmen's Union Contract that limits that the window in which complaints can be, in the Supervisors' case, in which complaints can be filed. In the Patrolmen's case, there is a, there's a window in terms of how long the window is for investigating complaints. And as you know, that provision was criticized by the Department of Justice in their in their report. And it was one of their four recommendations that the city addressed the collective bargaining agreement so that it doesn't so much limit the window opportunity to investigate these cases of police misconduct. So I just wanted to put that out there that, you know, that is one thing that I'm going to be personally be looking for is whether or not the recommendations of the Department of Justice are going to be taken into consideration. And that there, I'm hoping that there will be a change in the next proposal that will address that recommendation. Does anyone have any questions or concerns for?
Just if I may, Mr. Chair.
If you can, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, everybody. Joe, thank you for being here, for calling this meeting. I just want to reiterate, we emphasize what Councillor Ramos just said. I think that was a major issue of contention with Springfield Supervisors' Union as well. I do think, however, and I realize this is going to take as well with the the input of the Supervisors' Union. But in my mind, it should be one set uniform standard of whatever it is, is chosen. I think having different timelines for the Supervisors and the and the regular guys in my mind could be problematic. I don't have a number for you, Joe. But I think it should be uniform, should be the same expectation for everybody across the board. So just a little bit of feedback on that particular issue. The Councillor Ramos just brought. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
If anyone else has any questions or concerns, please raise your hand. I don't see any hands raised, but I just wanted to read the text for you, if you don't mind, since we have a little bit of time. Just looking it up here. Okay, so so it was stated in the DOJ report, it said, pursuant to the patrol officer and Supervisors' Unions collective bargaining agreement, the Internet, the Internal Investigations Unit, IU, has a 90-day timeframe to finish investigations, which is short compared to other law enforcement agencies. And in the conclusion, the DOJ also recommended that the city should address the fact that administrative charges can be dismissed due to timeliness issues. So two things, it's the 90-day timeframe, and actually, they're both the same. I take that back. The fact that administrative charges can be dismissed due to timeliness issues because of that 90-day timeframe. You know, that is a recommendation from the Department of Justice in their in their 28-page report that was submitted on July 9. And it speaks to both contracts, although the Supervisors' Contract was a little bit more restrictive because it went from the date of of the incident. And then the Patrolmen's Union's contract is different because it goes, it starts, the clock starts from the day of that the incident is reported. However, that 90-day timeframe for investigations is something that is cited in the report as problematic. And one of their recommended changes, so they're recommending changes to both both contracts, even though they're slightly different.
Yeah, can I just address that?
Sure.
And if I think I heard you correctly, it's actually 90 days within which they have to bring charges. They get to continue investigating for another 60 days before a hearing is required if they're going to follow through with charges. So it's really not about whether or not they have to stop an investigation. It's more about whether or not they have to decide whether or not to bring charges in that time. And essentially, if they're not sure, they generally bring charges. Just to be, just to be a little clearer on that.
Gotcha. I appreciate that. There were some concerns that were brought up during the last proposal with the Supervisors also around trading, not training, the Assessment Center. I don't know if any of my colleagues wants to speak to that, but there were some concerns around the Assessment Center and the sort of the shift between the promotion process now. And whether or not that we're going to be moving towards an Assessment Center. And I guess what percentage of that would count towards promotions? I don't know if anybody wants to speak to that. Councillor Allen?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. I've not really been involved in this process since those meetings that were, I don't know if they were in the fall or December or something about the previous iteration. We were trying to do a one-year contract, I think, to bridge to the next longer-term contract. And I believe the police administration had tried to put an assessment, had advocated for an Assessment Center to be used in the selection for officers, et cetera, that it was a more broad-based, if you will, evaluation than just the exams. I think that Deputy Chief Kent was in those meetings, and that's what I remember him saying, something to that effect, that they thought that the leadership situations that occur now on the street or whatever, in police situations require a deeper and more, the situations are more complex. And the people who have been to the Assessment Center training, if you will, or are through that process, the theory is that they demonstrate a higher level of leadership than the exams do. That's what I recall is the, I'm not sure if I said it exactly right, but that was in the last time I was in one of these meetings, that that was one of the things that was said. I hope I said it right.
Councillor Ramos, if I may.
Yeah, Councillor Whitfield?
I think that we wanted to make sure that, or we wanted to ensure that the officers that is being promoted, we didn't know how the assessment was going to take place. And I think that they said that, and you can correct me, Joe, if I'm wrong, that the Assessment Center would be via, what is it called? I can't think. I'm driving too, but I'm hand-free. The Assessment Center would be out for bid. It will go out for bids for the Assessment Center. That's correct. Do you all hear me, Councillor?
I can barely hear you, but I think your question was whether or not the Assessment Center would be going out to bid. Was that your question?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know if either Attorney Mahoney or Joe, if you can answer that.
I think, I know I can't.
Okay.
Do you know?
You're, see, it looks like you're not muted, but we can't hear, we still can't hear you, Attorney Mahoney.
If it had passed, we would have put it out the bed, yes.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer your question, Councillor Whitfield?
Yes, we just wanted to, you know, make sure that it was a fair process. Like who was going to be doing the assessment, who was going to determine what leadership qualities are considered leadership qualities? And kind of like wanted to know how the Assessment Center came about because in the past, it had just went by like the scoring of the officers. And, you know, now you know, I can understand that, you know, a score cannot be the judge of leadership, but for many, many years, it's just been the scores. And now, you know, you all wanted to transition to the Assessment Center, just wondering, you know, how that came about.
Thank you. Councillor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councillor Whitfield's question triggered another question for me. Is this, this question is more to ours the city. Well, even though this Assessment Center will go out to bid, is that is there a uniqueness to this bidding process that will only boil down to one group? Is there anything unique about the bidding itself?
Not certain what you mean by that, but typically, we go out to bid and there's usually a few bidders that'll put in from it, some of them locally and some of them from different parts of the country.
Well, to be honest with you, I'm not even sure what I mean by uniqueness because I know sometimes the city calls to say it's a unique project. And so I thought, you know, I'm just trying to get my sense, sense around it. It seems like you yourself not sure. You know, but I just tried to clarify if this is going to be hopefully many bidders and if it's going to be a unique project or not. But, Mr. Chair, I have a question, if I could, for Joe. Joe, I believe recently while the audit committees, they were auditing the I'm drawing a blank, my apologies, auditing the Queen Bill, the payments. And I think the city is moving now to weekly payments, perhaps, if I recall correctly. Can you give me a feedback? Is there anything from your perspective for the officers? Is that going to be okay? Distributing weekly? Would you rather, guys rather have a lump sum assistance?
You're telling me that is the first I'm hearing of that, that there's talk of going to a weekly payment. But as it stands right now, there's no weekly payment. And it's in our contract how it gets paid. So maybe you're, maybe you're showing Bill's hand early.
Well, I hope not, because this was a public meeting that we talked about. I before spoke in a public meeting, so so I will public information. So anyhow, that's my question for now, Mr. Chair.
This was at an Audit Committee meeting, Councillor?
Correct. Which I think highlights a little more, Mr. President, what Joe started talking. I think it's a great idea so that we can, within the limitation of discussion, that we can get ourselves on the same page so that what Joe said, we hold up a contract that the guys need so badly, because at the end of the day, they are the ones that have to continue to work with our contract. Which reminds me, Joe, when does the contract expire?
So the contract expired last July. And again, I think we would, no, there's no blame to be passed around unless I can blame the pandemic for where we're at. It's just a matter of when we do get in there and we do all the hard work, I'd like to bring it back comfortable that the city council is going to be, be on board with it.
Thank you.
Councillor Letterman?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question, actually, going back to the two topics that were discussed. So the first one around the concerns that some councillors had with the Assessment Center and the Supervisors' Contract. I don't, I'm not expecting that we will see that, that debate in this contract, unless I'm misunderstood it. Would Bill or Joe, would this, would that play into the Patrolmen's Contract as well as the Supervisors' Contract at this time?
You know, I gotta tell you, this is not, this is not a great process. This is, this is, I appreciate Joe's comments, like, look, we'd like to get the contract done. And when it comes back to you, we'd like your support and we'd like you to know that both sides have negotiated this fairly. You know, they put a lot of time and effort into it, and we're bringing you back a deal. One, that the city feels is a good deal for the city and the union because they've ratified it before we bring it to you, that they also feel it's a good deal. But sitting here and talking about possible proposals and what might be in, what might not be in, I don't think that's helping the process at all, to be honest with you. Because if you're getting your expectations up that something's going to be there, it may not be at the end of the day. And then, you know, you've already gone on record of like, oh, well, we really needed this in order to make the deal happen. And that might not be there, but there might be five or six or seven other great things that are in there. And that's why this is not typically done in this fashion, that this is done with, you know, we go to the table, the union goes to the table, we exchange proposals, we talk it through, we try to reach a deal that we can. And then we bring it back to you and we tell you that, listen, this is a good deal, and that's why it's in front of you.
All right, next question. Back to the question around the 90 or 120 days that was such a serious concern in the last iteration of a police contract. My understanding was, I understand the time question from the DOJ report. But relative to that language of the date of report or date of incident, if I recall from the conversations and meetings that took place, in the Patrolmen's current contract, it is, the 90 days starts from the date of the report. Is that accurate?
Yeah, the data, the department's aware of the incident, yeah.
Okay, thank you both so much.
Thank you, Councillor. And Attorney Mahoney, I I definitely appreciate your position and I and I can see, you know, I am familiar with the collective bargaining process as a union member myself. I can see where the challenges that you're referring to. I really didn't get a I scheduled this meeting again at the request of Council President, and I guess I really didn't think whether or not there was going to be any, as to what we can, what we shouldn't, shouldn't talk about. I feel that everything that was shared today was, has already been mentioned out loud at some public forum, either whether it's a committee meeting during the Supervisors' Contract process, or whether it's an audit meeting, as was mentioned earlier. It's frustrating for us as legislators because we have the final say-so, I guess. When we vote to either fund or deny the contract, but we are never really given an opportunity to express our concerns until the proposal comes before us. So whereas I do respect your position and I do understand it is, it is, you're absolutely correct. This does affect the city's position in collective bargaining and and it may not be the best process, but, you know, not having any input from the legislative body, which ultimately is going to either approve or deny this contract before there are even negotiations had, isn't the most perfect process either. So I'm conflicted. I don't know if this is something that we should be doing moving forward, but I know that there needs to be an opportunity for the city council to express their concerns prior to the city and any collective bargaining unit. Especially one like this one that, you know, always seems to be contentious. We should have an opportunity to express our concerns. So, I mean, I don't know if you have other suggestions as to how we should do the, make the process better moving forward. But, you know, business as usual, as has been done before, just honestly, doesn't work for me.
My suggestion is if you have proposals that you think are very important, send them to me and we'll take a look at them. I mean, that's what I think the process is. You know, your role as the council is to make a financial decision about whether or not to fund the contract. It's not to negotiate the contract. That's just not the role in Massachusetts for an elected body. That's not the role for an elected council, I should say. But if you guys have a concern or something, you know, we can certainly take a look at it. And and we have looked at the issues that you guys have talked about already tonight. We've looked at all the issues that you've talked about tonight. So, I certainly understand Joe. Joe's got, you know, a level of frustration, I think, as to the Supervisors, and that when they come to the table, when they reach a deal with us, you know, they want, they want that deal to be supported. They're going back to their membership and they're saying, we think this is a good deal. We want you as a membership, the people that have elected us as your union leaders, we want you to vote in favor of it. And when they do, then they're expecting us to be able to carry through on our side as well. So I understand Joe's frustration with the process as I do the Supervisors. You know, we're coming back to you, we're coming back to you. We've done a lot of hard work and we're bringing you the best deal we think we can.
Thank you for that. Councillor Whitfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I do definitely appreciate the hard work that you do, Attorney Mahoney, and that Joe does. But it's our fiduciary responsibility to approve the contract. Now, if there's a contract, whether you guys negotiated for a year, two years, or two months, if there's a contract that we think may cause the city more financial risk, because you know, and I'm assuming that you know, we have paid millions of dollars out in contracts for civil complaints. And we get complaints all the time. And while you may not be directly involved with the complaints, or maybe you are, whether it's our responsibility to negotiate or not, we are the foot on the bra for the community and they complain to us about what's going on in the Police Department. And so in order to approve something or feel comfortable with something, we do need to have a discussion about it. We're not here to say that you guys are not doing the best job that you can because I honestly believe that you are. But we all have jobs to do. It will be very hard for me to approve something that I truly don't believe in and don't agree with. Williams, good faith effort came up with just so we could hear each other out. Me and myself that have some suggestions to send them to you, Ms. Mahoney. But I wouldn't even have known to do that if discussion was taking place. So I do feel that it's important. And I do feel that we have a job financially to approve the contract. And so I personally have to feel comfortable with doing that. And with the last contract, that was just not the case.
Thank you, Councillor, for your thoughts. Attorney Mahoney, would it be would it be a better, would it improve the process if, moving forward, the city council were to meet with you in executive session prior to the negotiations? Would that be, would that be helpful?
Wait, that might be something we got to look at.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We got on this particular issue, I fully understand Attorney Mahoney's point, that's a very good valid point, and God forbid, there's that, anything that is done derails the process because at the end of the day, these guys, the Police Department, need a contract and they need a fair contract. And I was thinking, that's definitely an option of what you suggested, and that's a good idea to have the executive sessions. But I'm just thinking outside of the box here, Mr. Chair, I wonder if perhaps we should have some sort of a two-member city council, some sort of a committee or something, I don't know, to sort of interject and report back to us? Does it mean any need to have this kind of meetings going forward so that we can be sort of feedback and we can turn, give them feedback and they can bring it on to the table so that we can make expedite decision when the time comes. So we are, we are not asked to approve a contract that we never seen. Would that be the same, Mr. Chair? I wonder if it could be possible, this is the first time that I'm going to be through a contract negotiation with the Police Department. And they've, God knows, that we really want to make the best fair decision, both for the residents and the guys in the Police Department.
Thank you for
If I may, we would like to get a copy of the current contract so that I can familiarize myself with what's theirs. And I don't have it. Maybe Joe or Attorney Mahoney can send us a copy of the contract that it's there now. And lastly, my question is, even though the contract expired, that still holds in terms of language, particularly with discipline? What happens if there's a discipline now? Do we adhere to the old contract, to the old language? And that question is to either Attorney Mahoney or Joe.
We continue to follow the terms of the contract.
Terms of the contract. Thank you, Attorney Mahoney.
Thank you, Councillor Whitfield, for bringing that up. I actually, I think that's one of the questions that I asked in the past is whether or not there could be perhaps either the Council President or the Chairman of Public Safety. perhaps either the Council President or the Chairman of Public Safety could be part of the discussion. Attorney Mahoney, what is the, who is the, is there anyone else that who is involved on the city side in these negotiations other than yourself?
Yeah, remember, we have 12 unions on the city side. So I'm involved in all of them. The collective bargaining agent is involved in all of them. And then representatives from the police department are involved for police negotiations. Representatives of fire department are there for fire negotiations. And there are other departments that are involved in other union contracts with us. So we never go to the table just with labor relations. It's always labor relations in the departments.
But when you're negotiating with, for example, with the Patrolman's Union, who is at the table other than yourself and Joe?
It's, well, it's the union's bargaining team, their attorney. It's the collective bargaining agent for the city who goes with me. And then it's the deputy, one of the deputy chiefs will sit in.
Have you ever given thought as to whether or not that could include one member of the city council?
I've given that thought and I would never, ever advise it. In fact, I think it's always a very bad idea.
Well, I mean, you're, you're the attorney, you're an expert in this field and you've been doing this for for many years. I, you know, definitely appreciate and respect your the work that you do for our city and very grateful for it. If there are no other questions, we'll adjourn this meeting and then we'll, you know, we'll just think about better ways to improve this process moving forward. My apologies to both sides if there was anything that was discussed in this meeting that should not have been discussed. But moving forward, we definitely want to think about what, how we can improve this process. All right, so if there are no other questions, I will adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.